Good evening and welcome to the Tuesday, March 7th, 2023 Business Meeting of the Olympia City Council. For the record, we have a quorum with council members Payne and Cooper excused. Before we go into approval of the agenda, I have one announcement. I'd like to ask Councilmember Partially to read a brief statement regarding the 100th Anniversary of the Women's Club in Olympia.
First, the members of the club wanted to thank the mayor for doing this proclamation, and they just wanted to highlight a few things. The Women's Club has actually been around since 1883. It's a fixture within the city. They started to enhance the lives of women and give them a place to speak and express themselves. They continue to provide education for members in a variety of areas, and they serve as a resource to assist, aid, and support other nonprofit organizations such as the Relay for Life, starting a new Penn Pell program with first graders, a scholarship program for graduating seniors, and making chemo bags for the people going through chemotherapy. And I was asked to let everybody know that there's going to be a little bit of a celebration on March 10th, 4:00 to 7:00, at the Women's Club to celebrate their 140th anniversary.
I had the number wrong, 140. All right. Thanks for sharing that and all the good work that the folks at the Women's Club do. And, you know, it is Women's History Month, so very fitting. With that, I need a motion to approve tonight's agenda.
So moved.
Second? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Agenda is adopted. We're going to go to special recognition now, which is our item 2A. And tonight, we're recognizing Disability Awareness Month. And so we're going to do a shared reading here from the dais, and then I'm going to invite forward a couple of community members to speak with us. So we'll start, I believe it starts with Councilmember Madron.
Whereas, the City of Olympia recognizes that persons with disabilities are a valued and vital part of our community as workers, civic leaders, business owners, veterans, family members, and friends. And whereas, the City of Olympia recognizes the vital contributions that persons with disabilities make in our community, and...
Whereas, the City of Olympia understands that the most effective way to increase awareness and strive for equitable change is through our community's openness to acknowledge that systemic barriers, negative stereotypes, and harmful attitudes around individuals with disabilities exists, and...
And whereas, the City of Olympia acknowledges that those barriers impact ability of individuals with disability to enjoy equitable experiences and live independent, productive lives within our community, and...
Whereas, the City of Olympia is committed to ensuring equal access, increasing accessibility, and committing to full inclusion that ensures the rights of persons with disabilities to be equal contributing members of our community, and...
Now therefore, be it resolved, the Olympia City Council does hereby proclaim the month of March 2023 as Disability Awareness Month in the City of Olympia, and urges the community both individually and collectively to strive for education and understanding of the valued contributions individuals with disabilities make within our city as means to working together to ensure the best quality of life for every member of our community. Signed in the City of Olympia, Washington, the 7th day of March, 2023, Olympia City Council, Cheryl Selby, Mayor. So thanks for submitting the opportunity to acknowledge Disability Awareness Month. And I now have a proclamation that I am happy to hand off to Joslyn Nelson. Yes, would you like to come up and make some comments?
I just want to say thank you very much for the proclamation. And I do want to take a brief moment on the National Disability Awareness Month to recognize Judy Hume. Without her dedication and work, many people with disabilities would not have the opportunities that they have right now, and the City of Olympia would not have the opportunity to recognize National Disability Awareness Month. So I just want to take that opportunity to give these civil rights activists for disabilities a moment, and thank you so much for recognizing this month and all the contributions that individuals with disabilities have been making, and along with myself. So I really appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Any comments from the dais tonight? Councilmember Partially?
This touches really close to the home for me. My mother, I grew up with a mother with a disability due to polio, and coming to a restaurant with two stairs was an incredible barrier, especially later in life. You know, we would have to pick another restaurant. And the realization of simple things like that, simple barriers, sometimes escapes us, even me, the person who grew up with someone, when I walk up to a parking meter and it's above the height of a wheelchair's access. So I appreciate this, and I appreciate the work all being done.
Thank you. Thank you so much. Have a good evening. Next, we're on to what would be public comment for this evening. We did not have anybody sign up online or in chambers this evening, so we will move right on to adoption of our consent calendar. I need a motion.
So moved.
We have four pools that I know of. We have 4G, 4C, 4I, and 4J. Are there any other pools this evening for comments from staff? All right. So I'm going to invite forward Darian Lightfoot, who is our Director of Housing and Homeless Response. And rather than me read the name of every single pool, you'll just cover it in your response. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Hello, my name is Darian Lightfoot, Director of Housing and Homeless Response. I'm going to go over four actions tonight. They're within four slides here, so I'll pause each one, allow time for questions or clarity, and then we can move on. First up is 4C, the CDBG substantial amendment. I just want to cover what's happening in the substantial amendment. In 2017, 19, and 2021, there was approximately $160,000 remaining in unspent entitlement funds. Scope changes, eligibility of the contract ended up changing, so we had some leftover funds from those four program years. And then we received additional funds from Commerce for COVID relief. So we released an RFP for these funds and ended up selecting two projects. The first project was $150,000 to Homes First, and that was to do rehab, weatherization, critical home repair to 10 of their homes that they already own in their portfolio in the City of Olympia. And so that is the first proposed project to you all tonight. And the second one is $20,000 to OliMap to provide additional case management at Nickerson and New Hope Tiny Home Village. And the remaining funds we have yet to allocate, we're looking to extend a partnership with Familiar Faces and OPD, but those are the two contracts before you tonight. And I just want to highlight that the Consolidated Plan, the 2023-2027 Consolidated Plan is in the works. And with that, community engagement, upcoming projects will all be coming to the Community Livability and Public Safety Committee for you all to review and discuss, and then future connection to public engagement will be talked about that committee in April. So just wanted to highlight that there.
Any questions on item 4C? All right, thanks. Go on to item 4G.
Okay. Item 4G, the RHC Home Fund ILA. So in January, the city entered into an ILA with Thurston County to combine our home funds, and that triggered a 90-day needed amendment to the RHC ILA. So that's what's happening tonight. That's what is proposed. In this amendment, we are looking to fold in the home fund into the Regional Housing Council and create an administrative arm to be able to responsibly administer those funds. So with that comes our two advisory boards, the Affordable Housing Advisory Board and the Homeless Services Advisory Board. And that has been going really well. The first meeting is next week. Most of the work done by county staff and our new Affordable Housing Program Manager, Jacinda Selchis. And so that's happening next week, and those administrative duties are in this ILA. And just want to plug that this amendment is just another great step to our regional effort to addressing housing and homeless response, and we're excited for this new engagement with the RHC.
Thank you for that. I know we have some comments from the representative on the RHC, Councilmember Madron.
Yeah, I just wanted to speak to this because there was an article in the paper with some concerns with an elected official in another jurisdiction. And I just want to make sure that we're all aware as a council that Olympia does have, in the ILA, there is more representation for people who live in Olympia or organizations based in Olympia. And the reason for that is that we are giving up substantial control authority over millions of dollars that our voters approved for the home fund. And so I just wanted to make sure we're all aware of that, that there's a reason that things are written the way that they are, and that this is Olympia showing that we're fully into the regional response, that we are here, we're collaborating, and we're very, very excited to work with the other jurisdictions to solve these really, really difficult challenges.
Thanks for that clarification. All right, we can go on to item 4I.
Okay. Item 4I. Excuse me. So Lanesville Apartments, located at 911 Burr Road, next to the Eastside Co-op. This is a project we had talked about a couple of months ago. The, yeah, we'll just talk about the project quick. So many of the units, 2, 3, and 4 bedrooms, 162 units, housing around 400 people. All the units will be at 60% AMI, just an incredible project to our community that we desperately, desperately need. So what's before you tonight is that this project is going in for a LITEC award, and that's the low-income housing tax credit for the 4% award. With that, what is required for an application is a 5% local match. It's not a competitive process. If the application has the needed requirements, which is that 5% local match, it receives the tax credit. Olympia stepped forward in January and said that we will provide half of the needed local match if the RHC can provide that other half, and the RHC committed. So now we are here to approve this letter, so Southport Financial can attach it to their application, do it at the end of this month, and move the project forward. So we're really excited. A cool regional project that the letter tonight of support will be attached to that application and will be submitted for the project to continue. And I have just a slide of what it looks like. A lot of cool stuff with the project, it's hard to see, but it's all solar, it's EV-ready, has Wi-Fi on the site, there's a playground, a rec area, it's incredibly walkable, next to a grocery store, the whole kit and caboodle, that's what my grandma would say. So yeah, just a great project, and so we're excited to have the letter of commitment tonight to keep the project moving forward.
Great. Any comments from the council members? Just excited. When would they break ground?
I think the projection probably early next year. Early next year.
Okay. So 2024. Got it. And now our final, 4J.
All right. 4J. A little biased, most excited for this one. So St. Francis House on Martin Way, located at 113 De Beau. This project was a veterinary clinic that is now being converted into a clothing bank, a St. Vincent de Polk Clothing Bank on the first floor, and having four units of affordable housing on the second floor. And all units will be at 80% AMI or below. And so tonight is being approved are the impact fee waivers. And this is Lot's first project of their impact fee abatement. And so this project is receiving transportation parks and the school district impact fee waivers, but the Lot one is a great highlight. Their project kicked off on February 7th of this year, so this is the first project to make it through their rebate program. So yeah, and this is just a couple of folks in the community who's wanting to play in the housing game. So they purchased a veterinary clinic, they're flipping it, having a clothing bank on the first floor and four units on the second floor. And so tonight is approval of the impact fee waivers and the first project that's moving through Lot.
Thank you. Any questions? I had just one. So it's a private party, it's not an organization?
They created the St. Francis House on Martin Way LLC, but it is a couple of community members who wanted to purchase the veterinary clinic and turn it into housing. And so that is what they did. They're looking for occupancy in about a month, and that's it. Yeah.
Well, I'm glad this first Lot project took place in Olympia.
Yeah, we are the only region right now in the county that has an established partnership with Lot. I think that neighboring jurisdiction is still working out, but because we have our already established impact fee waiver program, we have the covenant set up, we were able to fold it in with that and to move it forward quickly.
Lovely. Councilmember Partially, our Lot representative.
Yeah, you nailed it. And Lacey right now is working on that. We put this affordable program, and we wanted to be able to use standards that was applicable across and accepted across all the jurisdictions, and Olympia was best, you know, set up to do this and then to have this project. I can tell you, hearing from Lot staff today, you're putting them through the paces, and they're learning some of the things they have to brush up on and do better, and we're going to be hearing about that tomorrow night. But we also heard last meeting that if this actually becomes viable, we will probably open the ILA to put it in to make it permanent. So way to go to get one going.
Great. So thank you so much, Darian, for that report out. We have these consent agenda items that a lot of times people don't realize how much work goes into those because they just get passed over pretty quickly in our agenda. And so it really is nice to highlight such great work. So thank you.
Thank you.
All right, so we have a motion and a second to adopt tonight's consent calendar. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Consent calendar is adopted. That takes us to our other business items this evening. We start off with pretty exciting, well, they're all exciting, but this one I'm going to invite forward Mike Reed, our Economic Development Director in our Office of Community Vitality, to talk about this pending approval of resolution authorizing the sale of city-owned real property located at 3900 Boulevard Road Southeast to South Puget Sound Habitat for Humanity for Affordable Low Income Housing. And he will be joined by Carly Colgan.
Good evening, Council. For the record, mine is Mike Reed, I'm your Economic Development Director. I'm going to keep this first part pretty brief. We've been through a pretty long process to get to today, but we're here. We first issued a request for proposals pre-pandemic, it seems like it was decades ago, but we worked very hard to get to this point. You worked with me on creating what you wanted to see on this 3900 Boulevard property, which is that 10 acres off of Boulevard. And these were the seven vision items that we distilled down through multiple conversations. And what is exciting is today, you have before yourself a purchase and sale agreement that I think gets you everything you were looking for, and then maybe a little bit more. So you have a purchase and sale agreement before you tonight with Habitat for Humanity for the 10 acres off of Boulevard Road. In that purchase and sale agreement, I won't belabor all the technical components associated with the transaction. So a couple of things, I think ultimately to highlight for the public is that the city would be selling this piece of property for a dollar for Habitat. It comes with a deed restriction, which means that attached to every piece of property there, that there's a covenant actually attached to the deed that will require these items. So primarily, the site will be used to build affordable housing, which is defined as serving households at or below 80% of the area median income. Our purchase and sale agreement requires that Habitat for Humanity build a minimum of 100 total units of housing, within a further minimum that 65% of that 100 have to be affordable owner occupied. I can tell you tonight, we will exceed both of those. So the current plan right now is actually for 128 units, and all of them would be owner occupied, affordable housing. So we're still in the land use approval process that we have to work through, so that number could move slightly, but that's where we're dialing in. There is also the potential for a 1-acre site to be rezoned to meet the commercial center need that was a priority for us, and what's currently being looked at is a 3,000-square-foot commercial building that would be on site. Habitat will have 90-day feasibility once this transaction is signed. After that 90-day feasibility contingency, if they remove it, they will move towards closing on the transaction. The city also has the right to repurchase the property at our purchase property, or at our purchase price if, for whatever reason, there's a failure to be able to really kick off and get through that process. So that's the details of the transaction, but I will never miss an opportunity to get Habitat for Humanity in front of an audience and in front of our community, to let them know what Habitat for Humanity does and what this means for the city. So with that, I've got really three things. I've got Carly Colgan up here that she, I'm going to have her let the public know what Habitat for Humanity is, what they do. And then we're going to show you some beautiful pictures of the conceptual designs and layouts for this project as we are today. And then finally, I want Carly to let you and the public know that if they want to remain involved in this project, and maybe even more importantly, volunteer or donate to Habitat for Humanity, how they can do that. So Carly, take it away. Introduce yourself, and you can just click forward.
Thank you. Hello, my name is Carly Colgan. I'm the CEO at South Puget Sound Habitat for Humanity. At Habitat for Humanity, our vision is a world where everyone has a decent place to live, and our mission is to bring people together to build homes, community, and hope. Since 1989, our organization has been building and repairing homes in Thurston County. We believe that no matter who we are or where we come from, everyone deserves a safe place to call home. We know that a stable home provides strength, stability, and self-reliance. At Habitat for Humanity, this is what unites us, and together we can build great things. An important note about this project and everything that Habitat builds locally is that we intend to sell these homes, and that we recognize the vast benefits and social return on investment that homeownership provides, both for individuals and for the community at large. There are obvious financial benefits of homeownership. Home equity contributes a much larger share of net wealth among the typical homeowner. The average homeowner has a net wealth 44 times greater than a renter. When we think about economic benefits, home equity is the leading asset that households can leverage to start a business, finance college education, or invest in other activities. Owning a home is the largest source of personal wealth for most families. When a household spends less than 30% of their monthly income on housing, they can allocate more than twice as much of their income for buying healthier foods, medicine, and healthcare than families who have to spend 50% or more on housing. Children of homeowners are 25% more likely to graduate from high school. The stability of a home means less moving, no new schools, and as a result, children of homeowners will earn 24% higher income in their lifetime. Homeownership roots people in the community unlike anything else. Homeowners are more likely to repair and improve their homes, they're more likely to vote, they're more likely to be involved in the community as a soccer coach, a member of the school's PTO, or as a city council member. The stability of a home provides both the opportunity to be involved and permission to say yes. A bit about how Habitat homeowners are selected and what factors we look at. The first criteria for Habitat homeownership is to have a demonstrated need for affordable housing. This includes an applicant being cost burden, living in substandard, unsafe, or overcrowded housing, or currently living in temporary or subsidized housing. It's fair to say that in our current market and conditions, a significant portion of our community has a need for affordable housing. Future Habitat homeowners are active participants in the home building and home buying process. The foundation of our unique program is working in partnership with families, and the main way that this is accomplished is through sweat equity. Each homeowner volunteers 300 hours with our organization. It's an opportunity for families to help build their home alongside volunteers and play an active part in making their dream of owning a home a reality. Habitat homeowners own their homes. They pay a monthly mortgage, they pay property taxes and homeowner's insurance. They repair and maintain their home on their own, and therefore, they have to demonstrate an ability to pay. Our program is a pathway to an affordable mortgage, but what most people might not know is that our homeowners walk into a bank and get a loan, just like anyone else. Habitat homeowners are hardworking members of our community. In a technical sense, they earn 30 to 80% of the area median income, but if you're like me, that really doesn't give me a clear picture of who our homeowners are. When we look at qualifying based on AMI, there are two components, household income and household size, that determine the percentage. For example, the average salary of a teacher in Olympia is $55,000 a year. A single parent with two kids who is a teacher would qualify for a Habitat home. Habitat homeowners are medical assistants and bank tellers, seniors on fixed incomes, single parents working multiple jobs. The bottom line is that in order to have a vibrant economy and healthy community, there has to be housing for all income levels, because we all deserve to live and work in the community we choose. We build energy-efficient, safe, quality homes. Traditionally, we have built single-family developments, but we recognize the need for more affordable housing in our community, and as a result, have begun developing higher-density communities, both to address supply and to keep our costs affordable with the continuing increases associated with undeveloped land and construction in general. A unique aspect of the Boulevard project is that these homes will all be permanently affordable through a land trust model. That means that Habitat for Humanity would retain ownership of the land, selling the home to the homeowner, and using a ground lease to lease land to the homeowner. You can see from this conceptual design that we intend to build 123 total units. 27 of the units will be senior cottages, 48 of the units will be townhomes, 48 of the units will be multifamily units, and there will be a 3,000-square-foot commercial building. We have some renderings provided by the artisans group to showcase the different types of homes. This is a view from the courtyard of the multifamily buildings. This is a concept of the 3,000-square-foot commercial space. This is a look at the multifamily buildings from Boulevard Road. Another angle of the multifamily buildings. These are the townhouse designs. And our senior cottages. Boulevard is the largest project our organization has ever undertaken, and in saying that, we can't do it alone. We will need the support of the community for this to become a reality. Ways that you can support this project and our organization include shopping at our stores in Olympia and Yelm. Proceeds from the retail stores allow us to build more homes. Donating to our organization. Gently-used furniture and building materials are always welcome at our stores, as well as financial support. And volunteering. Volunteers on the build site reduce our labor costs and help us build houses in a cost-effective manner. We're grateful for this opportunity and look forward to continuing to find solutions to address affordable housing in our community. Thank you.
Thank you. I almost want to applaud. Yeah.
You can applaud. You can applaud that, for sure.
All right.
So I was just, I'm offering if there's any questions about the purchase and sale agreement or anything further that you may need.
Okay, Councilmember Madron, followed by Mayor Potam Gilman.
Thank you so much, both of you, for all of your work on this. And I know many others have been involved as well. I just feel really proud of us as a city. I feel proud of Habitat for Humanity for figuring out how to kind of break through on the tough issue of affordable homeownership. And I'm really, really intrigued by the land trust model. One thing that we have coming forward from the Land Use Committee this year is that we're going to be doing some research around how we can do more projects exactly like this, and how we can leverage city resources to do more stuff like this, and other resources that we might not have been able to tap yet. And I'll just say that for myself, access to affordable homeownership, like, really made a difference for me in terms of just knowing that I could stay in Olympia, the place that is my home. And I do have a question, which maybe we'll end up delving more into this in this research that we do through the Land Use Committee, but, you know, the idea of affordable condominiums, when we've struggled to even get market-rate condominiums here in Olympia, I'm just curious, you know, how this all came together? You know, we haven't even been doing that in a subsidized fashion, in a non-subsidized fashion, like, how is it that we've been able to do this?
Well, you'll notice I never said the word condo. So we are still working out whether this is a condo or a co-op model, or what exactly makes the most sense for both us as a developer and the homeowners. And so we're not at a point yet where we have figured that out, but we've had a lot of great conversations with a number of different lawyers in our community and experts in different areas, and I'd be happy to talk more about some of the barriers that we've found already.
Yeah, I would be excited to hear more about that, and whether or not it is a cooperative model or condominiums, you know, affordable homeownership and being able to do it in, as, you know, with dense multifamily housing, like, that is just such an important need in our community. So thank you so much for figuring this out. Really appreciate it. Really appreciate it.
All right. Mayor Protem Gilman.
Thank you. I am so excited that the journey to get here started with the LBA Woods and looking at the Scotts Broome Fields along Boulevard Road and saying, could we carve those out and do something different with that if we're preserving the rest of the area's park? And Mike led us through an initial effort to find a developer, and this is the second round, and to have the elements of both Habitat and this land trust idea of holding the ground underneath and having people gain equity through the structures that they own, I think just really paves the way for us trying to begin to figure out how people can stay in Olympia and have housing that lets them thrive. So anyhow, I'm really super excited. I'm wondering if one of you could just speak briefly to that notion of what somebody would, or what a family would gain equity in a model where Habitat continues to own the ground underneath? I know it's not exactly all nailed down, but if you could speak generally to that, I'd appreciate it, Carly.
Yeah, so, you know, the way that we price our homes to begin with is a little bit different than, you know, normally. So when I say somebody in our program walks into a bank and gets a loan, they most certainly do, but they're going to get a loan that equates and allows their monthly payment to be thirty percent of their monthly income, which is a requirement of our organization. In our community, somebody that's thirty to eighty percent of the area median income, it's going to be around $150,000 that they can borrow for a first mortgage. So they're going to earn equity on that, and then we're going to create subsidy for the remainder to build out the cost to build the project. So that's where donations come into play, that is where grants come into play, and allow us to have the ability to do that. And I have a lot of spreadsheets that I'm happy to send you if you want to plug in numbers and actually see exactly how much equity people earn based on, you know, the percent of appreciation year over year in our community. It's helpful for us to see what that means for our homeowners today, in ten years, in twenty years, in thirty years, and when they might be, you know, ready to sell, what that looks like for them, because as much as it needs to work for us, it needs to work for them as well, because a critical part of what we do is, you know, allowing them to build equity, to move on. A lot of our homeowners sell their home and move into a market-rate home.
Next, I have Councilmember Partially.
I'm going to echo what my councilmates have said. I remember that first study session when we first started talking about it and getting super excited, and I think this is the first time I'm going to say I'm glad the pandemic happened, because it made us pause and we got this. And everything checkbox, just like what Darian was talking about earlier, you know, ownership, we've got energy efficiency, we're going to have families and seniors and commercial, and we're going to make use of this land for affordable housing. It's just fantastic, and I'm super excited, but my real question is, you know, as an elected official, we have channels. Is there any way we can get like a one-page thing that we can blast out to try to get the word out for you guys about what this project is?
Absolutely.
Thank you.
All right. Well, thank, oh, did you have something?
Oh, sure.
Just a quickie. You know, sometimes you come down the row, and I think to say something, to not say something, especially why add when everyone's already said great things? But this is amalgamation, I mean, this project of so many good things, so many aspects of the community together in different, at different points in their life, right? And I particularly really, really, really love that we are not putting seniors over there by themselves, right, with only seniors. I love that we have this sort of intergenerational community being built here. So just gratitude from me.
All right, and they've said everything. I had notes to say, and so I'm just going to give you our thanks and go forth, and we'll see how we can help as you start bringing these buildings out of the ground. All right. Thank you.
Mayor, we have a motion on this.
Okay, I thought, it wasn't, okay.
Can I make a motion?
Yes, please.
I move to approve a resolution of the City Council of the City of Olympia, authorizing the sale of city-owned real property located at 3900 Boulevard Road, southeast to South Pigeon Sound Habitat for Humanity for affordable low-income housing.
Second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes.
All right, turn around to item six B, which also needs a motion. I just had made the note on my six B, not my six A, sorry. So this is approval of the 2023 Plinth Project sculptures, and you just know it's coming up on spring, when we get to see Angel come here and talk about these beautiful structures that we get to enjoy for the summer. So Angel, tell us what we got this year.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor Selby and members of council. For the record, my name is Angel Nava, Arts Program Specialist, and tonight we are pleased to present to you the recommendation for the 2023 Percival Plinth Project. This is an exhibition of loan sculptures along Percival Landing for up to a year with a public vote to determine which sculpture will be purchased and added to the city's permanent collection. If approved, artists will receive $1,000 for the loan of each sculpture and one work selected by public vote for the purchase prize of up to $10,000. Here to share tonight's recommendation is Olympia Arts Commissioner, Arts Commission Chair Jim Burlingame.
Thank you, Angel. Thank you, mayor and councilmembers. Since 2011, the Percival Plinth Project has displayed one hundred and eighty sculptures on Percival Landing, and I'll just add extemporaneously that it's one of my favorite projects that I've been involved in over the years of being on the Arts Commission, because it's so visible, such a unifying part of downtown, the waterfront, which draws tourists and locals, and adds color, shapes, design for people to see and to vote on, as we'll hear about. The jury met on Thursday, February 6th, to review twenty-two submitted sculptures. The jury included Arts Commissioner Joe Bat, Percival Plinth Project 2022 People's Choice Award winner Eileen Legas, and artist and artist and community member Andrea Wilbur Seegum. All submitted sculptures were reviewed by city staff for a visual structure assessment. Jurors reviewed the work based on several criteria, including quality of work and attention to craft, safety requirements, and community engagement. Sixteen sculptures were recommended by the Arts Commission to City Council for approval on February 9th with no proposed alternates. And here I'll read the titles and the artist names. So we've got "Daff Niece" by Dawn Anderson, "Addiction" by Irene Osborne, "Encircled in Cycles" Jennifer Kapnick, "Blue" by Jenny Ellsworth, "The Chase" Ken Turner, "Intersecting Bodies" Ed McCarthy, "A Song for a Nutrine Peace" Nancy Thornchambers, "Hero Three" Dawn Anderson, "Rest" Jim Johnson, "Luna" Jenny Ellsworth, "Cresting" Ken Turner, "Joy" Jim Johnson, "Steel Sketch" Ed McCarthy, "Pierced Shell" John Kalin, "Early Morning Coffee on the River" Dan Brown, and "Roaming the Seas" also by Dan Brown. Here they all are. The action before you is to move to approve the remaining sixteen works as recommended by the Arts Commission for exhibition along Percival Landing for up to one year, starting June 2023. Sculptures would also be eligible for the People's Choice Purchase Award. Thank you.
Thank you, Jim, and thanks for all the efforts of the Arts Commission on this every year. You guys just bring forward such amazing beauty for us to all enjoy.
Yeah.
Any, start with Councilmember Madronfall, followed by Mayor Protem Gilman.
Those are so beautiful. I'm so excited. I have two questions. One is, I just noticed that these are from folks all over the Pacific Northwest. What is the geographic scope in terms of the artists that you recruit for this?
Yeah, the call is open to artists from Washington State and Oregon State.
Okay, excellent. And my other question, I don't know if you have the answer, it's just, it just popped into my head, but that Luna structure, does that hold water in it? It looks like it would hold.
It'll hold light, actually. So the piece is designed with some solar-powered lights that'll go inside. Any water would hopefully drain.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right. Very cool. Thank you.
I'm sorry, I'm still looking at the sculptures again. Oh, Mayor Protem Gilman.
Thanks. Just a couple of questions. One is whether there's already a date set for the reception, the opening of this installation? And then could you describe how the sculpture that we buy is selected?
Yes, yes, thank you. Thank you, Clark. So this summer, we're actually bringing back our community event that's connected to the Plinth Project for the first time since the pandemic. And so that date is scheduled for June 23rd, and we're actually moving forward, shifting the theme slightly. It will continue to be a voting kickoff, but we're really inspired by one of our artists during the pandemic. Aisha Harrison did her own sculpture warming when she installed her piece on the landing. It was a really private, with family and friends, but I was really inspired by that process of engaging with the work and celebrating the work in that way. And so moving forward for this year, we're looking at introducing a sculpture serenade to honor the work with music and performance, and so I'm really excited about it. But yeah, June 23rd. And then the process for choosing the winning sculpture is a public vote. So community members, once sculptures are installed on the landing, can vote online and help choose the piece that'll be added to the city's permanent art collection, which is really exciting. Thank you, Clark.
All right, you've got Councilmember Partially.
That was what I was going to ask, so I'm just going to thank you for the art break. We've been talking about that, for, you know, giving us all more creative juices, so thank you, I love this.
Wonderful, and, oh, Councilmember Fueng.
Jim, I have a question for you. Can you tell us a little bit about how we got to, how the commission got to these pieces? I mean, maybe not every single one individually, but I am curious.
Well, I have to call Angel back. In the past, I have been on the jury for this project, but I wasn't this time, but Angel oversaw that process.
Yeah, I'm happy to share. So typically, our process involves artists submitting works for consideration, so artists who apply are able to submit up to two works. And then all of those works are, go through a review process, so they're reviewed for safety, for city policy considerations, and then they also go through a jury with three people. And so typically, we like to choose an artist who's previously been involved in the process, a community member, and an arts commissioner, and then that jury makes a recommendation to the arts commission, and then the arts commission then approves of, or makes changes to that, or approves that recommendation, and then they present that to council.
That's a pretty robust vetting process. Yeah, I should stand at the Plinths a little bit longer now. Yeah, well, thank you. Thank you for sharing that.
All right, well, and thanks for continuing this beloved community tradition. All right, so I need a motion.
Councilmember Partially.
Yep.
Got to get, scroll down, do that.
I move to approve the Arts Commission's recommendation of sixteen sculptures of the 2023 Percival Plinth Project.
P3.
Second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? All right. unanimous, thank you.
All right, this takes us on to item six C this evening, which is a briefing on the March 2022 officer-involved shooting. We're going to be hearing from the community representatives that serve on this use-of-ford board. This would be the first case that we utilize their input and expertise, and so it's my honor to introduce Dan Smith, who's a lieutenant in our Olympia Police Department. And Lieutenant Smith, you'll be introducing each of the board members.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Yes. Good evening, mayor and councilmembers. As stated, I'm Dan Smith. I'm a lieutenant with the Olympia Police Department. I'm also one of the commanders of the Capital Metro Independent Investigation Team. I want to recognize Detective Sergeant Al Weineck here, who is my right-hand man and one of the supervisors of the Capital Metro Independent Investigation Team. Tonight, you'll hear from our community representatives, where they will have an opportunity to share with you their experiences, observation, and feedback about their role in the officer-involved critical incident on March 31st of last year. The Capital Metro Independent Investigation Team is comprised of highly-trained and experienced detectives from Olympia, Lacey, and Tumwater and Yelm Police Departments. Our team also works with the coroner's office, prosecutor's office, and the Washington State Patrol Crime Scene Response Team. Our team should not be confused with the State Office of Independent Investigation. That's a separate entity that is in the process of becoming operational. Prior to the community representatives speaking, I'll brief you about the role of the community representative, the principles of an IIT as it relates to the WAC code, and a brief overview of the critical incident. Following the passage of I-940 and Substitute House Bill 1064, that's the Law Enforcement Training and Community Safety Act, they were created to implement legislation regarding the new training and the requirement of an independent investigation that is completely independent of the involved agency. WAC 13912 establishes rules and criteria to determine what qualifies as an independent investigation of the police use of deadly force. The goal of this requirement is to enhance accountability and increase trust to improve the legitimacy of policing for an increase of safety for everyone. Ultimately, this is about the sanctity of life. In January 2020, WAC 13912 went into effect. This is the first critical incident, as the mayor said, that the City of Olympia, since the laws went into effect, that we used our community representatives in this process. Our community representatives have been selected through a City of Olympia Commission vacancies format, and we currently have six community representatives, and I want to personally thank our community representatives for their service. The duties, so the duties of a community representative are out of the WAC 13912. They participate in the selection of lead investigators and vetting. They review conflict of interest statements within seventy-two hours of activation. They're also given press releases, they're provided a copy and communication to the media prior to release. They also have access to the investigative file. When the investigation is complete, they attend the presentations to the involved agency, and they review uses of investigative equipment, if it belongs to the involved The five principles of an IIT, independent investigation, according to the WAC code, obviously completely independent, no information sharing. We have firewall systems in place that prevent that. Transparency. We have a website in which our policies, protocols of our team are made available to the public, including names of all of our members, then the community representatives that are assigned to the case, and weekly updates to the public. Communication. Something new with the law was an IIT member is assigned to the family as a liaison. And then the credible process will follow best practices, and also Olympia, we have an internal administrative review, and the credible investigators are well-trained and vetted by the agency. The overview of the incident, and I'm referring to a seventeen-page legal analysis of this critical incident that was provided to us from the Pierce County Prosecutor's Office. This was completed on February 2nd, 2023, ten months after the incident. Should also be noted that this investigation was staffed with eighteen investigators and evidence technicians, not including our prosecutor's office assistants and state crime lab technicians. The detailed report is several hundred pages long and can be accessed with a public disclosure request through the Lacey Police Department. According to the Pierce County Prosecutor's Office, a review of the investigation reveals that it complied with the statutory requirements and appears independent and fair. The officer's use of force was justified and lawful. I'm going to briefly go over the incident before turning it over to the community reps. On March 31st, officers were dispatched to an apartment complex on 1309 Fern Street where a neighbor reported suspect had set fire to his porch, attempted to spray the neighbor with pepper spray as he was trying to put out the fire. Officers were very familiar with the suspect, who has known mental health issues, and have responded numerous times to his residence. In order to provide mental health assistance, our crisis responders attempted to attack the suspect on several occasions. And on the night of the critical incident, we had a designated crisis responder on scene. Officers investigating the call developed probable cause to arrest the suspect for reckless burning and assault. As officers knocked on the door, the suspect exited and sprayed mace on one of our officers, and they went back into the apartment. Search warrant was obtained, authorizing law enforcement to enter the home, arrest him, search for evidence. Uh, the officers used multiple tactics to de-escalate the situation and avoid the use of force, in part because of their knowledge of the suspect's, uh, mental health condition. They tried using a mental health professional to convince the suspect to come out of his apartment peacefully. They made specific announcements, gave multiple warnings. Uh, prior to entering, he did not follow the commands, which left the officers in a situation where the only way for them to execute the lawful warrant was to enter the residence. Officers took care at every opportunity to de-escalate the situation by trying to convince the suspect to exit and surrender prior to entering the apartment. He refused to comply, instead arming himself with a machete and assaulted the very first officer to enter the bedroom where he was barricaded. Two officers were immediately injured by the machete attack. At that point, it was clear that the suspect posed a threat of serious physical harm to the officers. And the assault on one of our officers resulted in a serious and incapacitating injury. The lives of all the officers in that small room were at risk. Under these circumstances, there was no reasonable effective alternative to using deadly force to stop the suspect from further assaultive behavior. Any similarly, similarly situated reasonable officer would believe that the deadly force was necessary to prevent the death or serious physical injury of officers in that room. Uh, the officers provided first aid to the suspect and are credited with saving his life. In addition, officers provided first aid to the injured officers, applying tourniquets to one of our seriously injured officer, most likely preventing even more serious harm. On a personal note, uh, I know the officers involved, uh, had to deal with a lot of physical and mental trauma from this incident. They are resilient, uh, they took advantage of resources afforded to them, and they're all doing well. We appreciate all the community's support for officers. And, uh, all of these events, these officer critical incidents, they're life-changing and tragic. Um, and the sergeant and officers involved in this incident, they acted heroically in the face of, uh, grave danger, and I'm truly honored to serve with all of them. Our first community representative to speak tonight is Anna Held. Anna was a community representative for the, uh, Use-of-Force Board. She's an active licensed attorney in the state of Washington and Oregon with a specialty in administrative and constitutional law. She currently works in, uh, financial compliance at the Fred Hutchinson Cancer Center. All right, Anna, there you go.
Good evening, council. Uh, I think to explain a bit about my role in this process, I have to also explain that, uh, I served on an internal review board, which is internal to the Olympia Police Department, uh, as the single community representative. This is in fact separate from the process of the investigation that takes place, uh, before we got to the, uh, internal discipline review at the, uh, Police Department. Uh, and you'll be hearing from our community representatives who, uh, played that role. Uh, what that means is that when I, uh, came into this process, I actually came in knowing all of the facts out of the investigation. Uh, and so, I received a very large evidence packet ahead of time and reviewed it, and, uh, had a pretty strong understanding of what, what I was going to run into when I came into, uh, the two days of meetings and hearing testimony that we had. Uh, the purpose of the internal review board is to determine whether the officer who used force complied with the internal policies set by the Police Department. It is not a proceeding that has anything to do with criminal liability. And so, the council, the, the board itself was made up of me as a community member, uh, an assistant chief, or a deputy chief, uh, two lieutenants from the Olympia Police Department, the training sergeant from the Olympia Police Department, and a sergeant from the Lacey Police Department, as well as a patrol officer who was selected by the officer whose use of force was being reviewed. Uh, so, we gathered in this room, in fact, um, for two days to hear the testimony from all of the officers who were involved in, uh, in the use of force. At the beginning, we heard the report back from the investigator from the Yelm Police Department, uh, who covered all of the facts that were set out in the, uh, evidence packet we received. And then, from there, we, uh, heard the testimony of each of the officers who were present on that day. Only one of them used deadly force. So, the rest, uh, were there to provide their understanding of the facts of the matter. As part of this process, and hearing the testimony, uh, in large part, the, the importance of this process is not that we're going to hear facts that we weren't expecting. Uh, a lot of this is about ensuring that there's consistency between the testimony given to us and what's already in the record. Uh, and most importantly, it's the discussions between the board members to determine whether those facts, uh, and whether the acts of the officers actually complied with the policies that were set down. The Olympia Police Department has an internal use-of-force policy, um, which we reviewed, uh, at every stage of the process, and which we, after hearing, uh, the testimony of the officers, determined that the use of force wasn't in compliance with the policy. Uh, another aspect of the process is deciding or determining whether there are, like, forms of training that might be necessary, which is not to say that, uh, any officers made mistakes that needed to be corrected, but obviously, uh, in any situation where deadly force is used, uh, both, in my experience, working with the officers on this board, and also, I believe, as community members, we want there to be improvements in that if it's possible, um, even if no one made any mistakes. So, as part of that process, we did make, uh, some small recommendations to, uh, the department to improve their training, um, in particulars, uh, when it has to do with the entry into small spaces, such as the apartment that they, uh, did enter that day. In my experience, uh, all of the testimony was honest, I believed it to be honest. Uh, I believe it was consistent with the facts as we understood them from the investigative report. Uh, and, uh, in my opinion, the use of force was consistent with the policy. And that is also the decision that the board came to and recommended to the chief of police to make. So, this is not a decision made by the board, it is a decision that is made by the chief of police. Uh, the board simply makes a recommendation. I do think that that is all I have to report on this process. Uh, I'm sure that you all would be able to find out the details, so I didn't want to spend too much time going over that, but I'm happy to answer any questions you have.
Thank you, I was gonna ask if anybody had a question for you at this point. Uh, Mayor Portem Gilman.
And I appreciate that you, you spoke to, um, both the, the, the testimony being consistent with what was in the previous investigation's written record. And I, I, I wonder what sort of, I guess, your, your degree of confidence at this point that this sort of a process of having the internal re- review with a community member present would catch if, if a department was, um, trying to, to minimize, you know, an individual's exposure, um, I just, I know across the country, that's happened in departments. And is this, is this a tool that would make it less possible for a, a, a future department to try to protect one another?
I, I certainly think that the presence of a community member absolutely can help. I believe that transparency, um, usually by having someone like a community member or even multiple community members, uh, in a process like this, can only make it better. There are no guarantees when it comes to administrative processes, uh, and, you know, the Olympia Police Department was not the one that completed the investigation, the criminal investigation, which provided us with the evidence beforehand. So, I don't believe that there could have been, uh, any room for the department to have an effect on that investigation for the purposes of the internal, uh, disciplinary matters.
Thank you, uh, Councilmember Madron.
Hi.
Hi.
Um, so you serve in this role as a volunteer, correct?
Correct.
And so, I heard you say that you had a, a packet of evidence to review, and then, two days in this room, um, listening to, uh, testimony. Could, could you just estimate how much time you've put into this process?
Um, I believe, well, I, I think we probably spend about six hours on each of the, the days. Um, we, we had about eight hours scheduled each day, but, uh, the testimony went a lot faster than we expected. Uh, as for evidence review, um, that's something I have a lot of experience in, uh, having previously worked in workers' compensation and reviewing lots of medical documents. Um, I was able to do it in about eight hours.
Wow.
So.
Thank you so much for your commitment to this and for, for serving the community in this way. I really, really appreciate that.
Councilmember Partially.
I kinda wanna echo that, thank you, um, because, you know, as we move through this process for the first time, my assumption is when you put something together the first time, it may not be perfect, but each time we go through it, we improve on the process, so your insight is very important.
All right, I think we're ready. Our next speaker.
The next community member will be Garrett Cooper. Garrett is a retired, uh, Army, uh, Conan Commission Officer with a specialty in logistics. He's been working security up at the state, uh, um, state Capitol for nineteen years, and, uh, Garrett has a distinction of being the first downtown ambassador and the first well host. And he also worked five years at Downtown Library, so we all know Garrett very well. And Garrett served as one of the community representatives from the start of the case until the end. Garrett?
All right, thank you. How are you doing, member, uh, mayor and councilman? Uh, I'd first like to tell you, the reason why I'm here is because I feel it's a viable thing to have somebody outside the box, this is, uh, myself and the young lady here, because we need to have transparency with the police force that we have here. And we can do better, do better to make recommendations for changes. We're not here to criticize or to try to make the Police Department look bad. We're actually making it, trying to make it better for our community. Uh, I'd like to tell you that I love Olympia, I've been here, I've worked downtown, I know plenty of, uh, houseless people and members here as well. So, let me begin with, uh, the thirty-first. When we were first called, it was in the evening time that we were called, and we went to the incident that was there, and, uh, we were, after the fact that the individual moved and everything, we were told how things went, how they proceeded, how they used policies. Uh, the officers did announce themselves, they did have a, a designated crisis, uh, responder there, which is something else I wanna talk about in a little bit. Everything to me was pretty much by the book. The apartment manager filmed it all. Uh, the officers, I'm glad that they are safe, but they had every right to use force in the way they did, because the, the first officer got injured as well as the second. So, to me, it was a, uh, the shooting was righteous as what, as it happened. We were able to, uh, look at the newsletters that came out. They gave us a opinion, they asked for our opinion of the newsletters, any changes we need to make with the newsletters, and we also talked among ourselves in order to make sure we were all in the same sheet of music. Uh, looking at all of it and everything, and they laid it, everything out, with all the officers, their testimonies, the graphics of the showing, the layout of how everything happened, the visual aids that were given to us and everything. It was one of those that was well put together and well executed and everything. The future of all this with us is to make sure that the first one, as it went, the second one, we could be able to look at with an open mind and outside the box. We helped the police officers make sure that they're on the right track and just transparency is there. Uh, Officer Hollis was one of the investigators out of Lacey for this. And anytime we needed to make a call for anything, we had to ask. They were there to provide us with clarity of what we, we needed to know. There was no beating around the bush, everything was pretty much forward. So, to make the, you know, to, to me, the communication and the, uh, additional resources was valuable when doing with this shooting. Uh, my main thing that I wanna mention, just to keep it short, is that we have, uh, different options on dealing with conflicts that happens with officers. Officers are human, they have adrenaline flow. My main concern that I talked to the lieutenant about was that the training should be more on conflict resolution as a first option, which was done on this occasion here. It's also needed to have somebody in order to, uh, with the designated crisis responder, we need more of them. That evening, that designated responder was the first option in order to try to make things civil without a shooting. The individual responded with pepper spray and then locked the barricade himself in. When the officers went in, they announced themselves clearly the whole time. You could hear it outside the apartment. As they got into the area, it shows that the bedroom was pretty much cluttered. They had a narrow area of what you call an alleyway to function. They couldn't see inside the apartment because the individual blocked his, uh, window as well. So, the officers went in with an unknown. When the attack happened, then the shooting happened, which was verified, you know? Uh, my main thing is that we need more crisis responders to work on any incident that's dealing with somebody who has issues. That should be the first option at every shooting that happens, or every incident that happens where we have somebody who is in crisis, mental or whatever the crisis may be. So, just to keep things short, uh, you, with us here as outsiders and being part of the community, we wanna make sure the community has transparency and understand that the officers are not working alone, that they have a community to support, to back them on anything that happens. Uh, we do it with recommendations. Our recommendation at this time is all positive, because everything that happened was in a positive manner. They also will take it as negative if we have anything negative to say. But we're here not to disrupt the investigation at all, mainly just make sure it happens in a properly manner. And that's basically my bottom line. Any, any questions?
Thanks, Garrett, it's good to see you in chambers.
Thank you.
Uh, Councilmember Wen.
I, I wonder about, so you had, um, shared, uh, some recommendations.
Right.
Yeah, I wonder about, uh, any, um, any thoughts of, uh, ways that, um, for community members as yourself, that is taking the time to serve? Um, is there, how did you feel about being in the process?
Uh, because the way things are happening natu-, uh, nationally with police officer shootings and things, and the way the, uh, the way the news reports things, they don't get it, to me, they don't get it right the first time. Um, I feel that with us here, working with them to give our view of it, we, they accept what we, what we ask or, or recommend that, or recommend, or any questions that we have. They don't look at anything we say negative, they take it to heart, you know? So, it, it works, uh, to answer you, it works whereas we are heard and, and listened to, basically.
And then, just gleaming from, uh, what you had said previously, you felt like you were set up with all of the information and what you needed to be successful?
Yes, yes, we were. We, we sat in here with the officers and, uh, we looked at the slides and everything. So, yes, it was, uh, very upfront and honest to us, yes, well, to me, ma'am, yeah.
Thank you.
All right, next I have Councilmember Madron, followed by Mayor Portem Gilman.
Hi, Garrett.
How are you doing?
I'm good. Um, so, when, I, I know, um, when our officers are in a situation like this, that there's, there's trauma involved, especially in this case where there's actually physical trauma, but just the, the needing to use deadly force is really, really difficult for the officers. And I'm curious, um, you know, this might not have been your experience as a community member, but I can imagine, you know, um, that that could also, you know, but I can imagine, you know, that that could also, you know, cause some kind of vicarious trauma just to be around that. And I'm curious if you all have had access to any kind of training in terms of how to take care of yourselves when stuff like this comes up?
I, well, for me, I grew up in the, I'm from Washington DC naturally. Washington DC at one time was the murder capital of the world. I'm used to shootings. I'm used to, for example, when I was a teenager in Washington DC, a nineteen-year-old was shut down on the street in broad daylight. My brother says, coming from high school, my brother tells me, who's two years older than me, "Go up the alleyway on Fifteenth Street, look to your right. Just go." When I go up the alleyway and I look to my right, it's a young man, nineteen-year-old, that I knew, I finally knew his name, was Tyrone. Nineteen years old, shot on the street. He was shot by a twelve-year-old, carried a Mickey Mouse suitcase with a sawed-off shotgun. When the amelabs came up and put him, put him on what I call a slab, his body fell apart. Shootings in Washington DC didn't, it numbed me to the fact, because I grew up with it around me. Seeing it on TV and seeing officers not being liable for what they've done is the reason why I'm here. It's because we have an opportunity to, to work with the officers and let the police department know that they need to do something better. The training that they have in now, and I sat in with, what, nine people, I think it was? I sat in when they vetted nine officers from out of this area. And I liked the way they made, they answered the questions on, "How would you hold the public? How would you deal with the public?" A lot of officers who come here don't understand the diversity that we have in this city. They don't understand how to, to work with people in crisis. We need more officers to better understand how to deal with people in crisis and not react, but more, be more tentative to what they're looking at in front of them, is basically what I see. So I grew up around it. So it doesn't affect me like I've never seen it before, you know? So, yeah.
I just, I just ask to make sure we're, we're taking care of you, taking care of all the people who are involved in this. Because we might have other community members who get called to the scene who don't have that same kind of, you know, numbness to it as you described. And so just, just something for us to think about. And I'll just ask you the same question that I asked Anna. You know, you're a volunteer.
Yes, I am.
How much of your time would you say that you've, you've given to the city to serve in this way for this incident?
When we went to the first, okay, first of all, we don't see bodies. We see the act effects. We see where the, where they tried to save the individual with the galls. And we see the, the tasers that's been used and stuff like that. So we don't really see the body. A little blood, but that's something different. As a volunteer, when we first went out, I think we spent about four hours. And then we came in with two days? Was it two days we did the review with the layout and everything? I think it was about, anyway, it was about six hours that we did. We went through every step of what happened. And then we talked about it. And then we reviewed it again to make sure we all had it right. So I figure about six to, about six hours to maybe two days.
Okay.
Yeah.
Well, thank you so much for your service. We really appreciate it.
Next, Mayor Protem Gilman, followed by Councilmember Parshli.
So Garrett?
Yeah.
That's, that's what I was going to ask about was sort of, it sounds like you, about four hours on the, the scene of the incident, and then a couple of days, or six more hours. And then was there, between that point and today, were there more check-ins or how?
Yes, it was.
How did you, how were you kept apprised of what was happening?
By email. All right. First of all, when we get the emails, I don't keep that information on my emails. Okay? I don't keep it on my emails because it's, it's something that should not be overlooked by anybody else except myself. The newsletters come out, if we have a question about the newsletter, we can call Dan. Or at the time, the officer that was in charge of it, Officer Hollis. I called Officer Hollis maybe twice about, just making sure I can clarify things. And he took his time to make sure that my, that I got the right answer. So they always, when we asked, they always came back. And they came back in a timely manner, you know? So, yeah. We, they, yeah, they gave us what we needed.
That's great. So if I understand, sir, you did your, your couple of days where you were here when they were first gathering everything?
Right.
Then they kept you in the loop as they had email communications across?
Right.
And, and did it, did it end for you at the point when they, they sent a packet off to the prosecutor for them to make their recommendations? Is that the end or?
Uh, basically, yes. Yes. Once we go to the prosecutor, all we do now is just wait till after prosecutor comes back. Yeah.
Thank you, Garrett.
You're welcome.
All right. Next, you have Councilmember Parshli.
Juan, I'm, I'm just thank you for your service.
Thank you.
I, I think Councilmember, or Mayor Protem Gilman was getting towards one of my questions. I'm saving one for the powers that be that's sort of related to this. When all is said and done, is there a mechanism to get back ahold of the community observers and let them know, one, what the prosecutor said, two, what the internal review said, to show them that if they made a recommendation, at least it was heard or considered in any future training action by the, the department? Is, have, is that a part of the process? I don't know. Maybe you're the wrong person I need.
Yeah, I can answer that. Yes, we had a training with our law community reps on an after-action review on all of our cases. And that's a part of it.
Okay, so after everything's done, you sit down with them and you, okay. Just because that's part of the transparency?
Right.
Because they could be all there and in. And then when, when everything is closed, the doors are closed, you know, then they can say, oh, well, guess what? We're not going to do all that. We're doing something.
Oh, no, no. They don't do that.
Okay, good. That's all I wanted to know.
They keep us up to date on everything.
That's perfect. Thank you.
Thank you. I think that's all the questions we had for you, Garrett.
Oh, thank you. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, our next community representative is Reiko Collner, who everybody is familiar with. She has a long list of accomplishments. She's an active licensed attorney in the state with a specialty in judicial ethics, a current member of our Civil Service Commission. And of course, she was City of Olympia Assistant Attorney and Prosecutor. And she also co-chaired the Ad-Hoc Committee on Policing for the city. And also has long-term involvement in several local organizations. And Reiko was also with Garrett, was contacted initially and has been through the whole process. I'll turn it over to Reiko.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, councilmembers, and members of the public. I am, I was teamed up with Garrett. There were two community members on each of these deployments of Critical Incident Review Teams. So I'm not going to reiterate what Garrett said. I am also going to point out that there were some points in time when Garrett and I were together witnessing and hearing the same things. But also, we had separate information, separate contacts as the months went by and the review was taking place. So I'm going to try not to be redundant. I do want to start with a little bit of orientation of why I got involved with this and just put it in the larger context. I've been a government servant for over thirty years and a government attorney for over thirty years. And it's very important to me that laws that are passed with an intent to make our society better are examined in their operation to see if they're delivering and to try and make improvements as needed. So the orientation here was I-940 was passed in Washington State as an iteration of the nation's response to a greater understanding of what has been happening historically in regard to police use of force, particularly as it pertains to minority communities. There had been an awakening that took place very brutally with the murder of George Floyd, the death of Breonna Taylor, other numerous, numerous, unfortunately, numerous incidents, both in our state and outside of our state. So there was a readiness to examine that that brought about I-940. And one of the issues with Washington State's law was that use of force by a police officer was almost impossible to prosecute as a criminal offense because of the standard, the way the law was written. And that's one of the things that I-940 redid, reconsidered and redid. That has impact on some of the notes I have, not criticisms of what the OPD did or the CIIT team did, because I think they did their best with what they were working with. I think the system could use some toggling. And so one of the big changes in this system that I-940 and all these things that, that came from it has brought about, that police are more acutely aware of being potential criminal suspects than at any prior time in Washington State history. That changes the dynamic. That changes their feeling free and comfortable in reporting what their experience has been in the use of a critical incident, in the course of a critical incident. And I think that's really significant and that could use improvement. I'll get a little bit more specific right now. You see, the five principles of an IIT, and Lieutenant Smith talked about those. I want to go really briefly through what the goals are of the legislation that underlies all of this, because we want to talk about whether we're achieving those goals or not and how much closer we can get to them. The idea behind this law is to establish that law enforcement officers have a solemn duty to preserve life, including providing or summoning first aid at the earliest safe opportunity, to institute processes for independent investigations of deadly force incidents, to establish standards for family and community notification, including a requirement to notify tribes if an officer's use of force results in the death of a tribal member, and to remove the requirement that police malice be proven in order to bring criminal charges and replace it with an objective good faith or reasonable police officer standard by which prosecutors can more fairly evaluate deadly force incidents. Okay, that's what the law was trying to get at. So I want to just describe real briefly, chronologically, how I got involved or what I did as a member of the CIIT team. As Garrett described, we got a call fair, in the evening, to come on out and go to the scene right when it happened. So unlike the point in time when Anna was able to be involved, we didn't have a layout of what happened. We had only the briefest idea of what happened. And through the process, because of the independence required from the affected jurisdiction, police department, really, the officers here, the commanders, they didn't know anything. What they did know, they couldn't tell us. There was almost no communication with OPD, and that was observed very, very scrupulously. It's one of the requirements of the whole process, and I can report that that was done very, very scrupulously. We learned almost nothing from them. But what I did learn when I got on site, and it's something that I think is a very healthy involvement of a community member, is that a very traumatic incident, as you acknowledged, had just happened, and two of their own were badly injured, injuries that could have resulted in death. A femoral artery could have been severed, and that would have been death in moments. The whole thing was very grim, and so the impact on everyone in the department was notable. I worked many years ago as a prosecutor, would walk in and out sometimes with the police department. And, you know, it's, it's, it's active. People are energetic, high spirits. This was a group of people deeply affected and traumatized by what happened as they continued to go about their business. So the impact can't be understated, yet they're required to go ahead with what they need to do. We were taken to the scene. We were there for a couple of hours. It was limited with what we could do. We did have a decent idea of just physically what was going on there. And again, you had the impression of the impact on the officers who were there, whether they were in the City of Olympia Department or the other jurisdictions in the CIIT. We were introduced to, we were, we were, we signed confidentiality agreements. We were advised that we were going to be firewalled from OPD with regard to the investigation, which we were. We were introduced to liaisons with the Capitol Metro Team. And I'm going to differ a tiny bit from Garrett. As I said, we weren't, you know, joined at the head throughout the whole thing. We were together sometimes at the same time and same place. So my experience was a little bit different. Deputy Chief Hollis of Lacey PD was very accommodating. He was our liaison from, from the majority at the time of the group. He answered as many questions as he could. But it was obvious, both with Deputy Chief Hollis and everybody else involved, that this is a new thing. This is a new protocol. And I think it would be a great benefit to the success of this legislation if there was a statewide collation of experiences to derive what the best practices are for dealing with these situations. I, my impression, same as Garrett's, was that everybody involved with OPD and the CIIT were very earnest in their desire to follow through and follow the letter of the law and the spirit. But that's going to vary from place to place, as does the fulfillment of any government obligation. It depends on who you have there and how much they understand about what's going on, what their motivation is. And so I think that SOPs would be really, really helpful, in part to make sure that people have minimum best practice standards and in part to help people know what the heck to do. Maybe they won't have any of these incidents come up from time to time. And to have some guidance as to what works and what doesn't would be really helpful. The interim updates. For me, they're almost nothing. We were required to get weekly updates, and the update would be nothing new. They're still, they're still working on it. So we didn't get the results of the full investigation pretty much till the end. At the time, we did get the results of the full investigation. It was truly impressive. It was very, very thoroughgoing. It was extraordinary, in fact. But as it was leading up to it, we knew very, very little. And it was also unclear what we could be told. I would ask questions, very early on, I was asking, "How was the suspect doing?" I knew he was injured. And I asked questions about how the officers were doing. And again, the people to whom I were speaking weren't sure what they were allowed to tell us. So I think those SOPs would be really helpful. And that, at those early stages, is, is the time when the community's attention is going to be greatest. And one of the things that we're working on here with this legislation is to earn and deliver community trust and confidence in how the police are doing their job. So availability of earlier information, I think, would be an improvement. It's kind of, it's really, really firewallled as you're waiting for the investigation to be done. And I, and I respect that, and there are reasons for that. You don't want to have conflicting information or correct something that might be inflammatory later and then reduce trust. But I think some happy medium probably needs to be struck there. With regard to the press releases, what the wax, what the regulations require is that the civilians get to look at them. My experience was different than what Garrett described. I had a suggestion for the first press release and the, and I honestly can't remember who I was talking to. But I had a suggestion that, well, I know that the, the suspect who was shot is an older white man. I think you should put that out there. I think the community is interested in that. And the conversation back was, well, we have to show it to you, but I don't know that we have to talk to you about it. So we had a bit of a back and forth there. Again, SOPs would be helpful. There'd be no point in showing us an early version if they weren't looking for some feedback or, or needing to incorporate it in some way as a representative of the community. I'm still not 100% clear on what we could have said to anyone outside in regard to the investigation and at what point that could be said. And I think that community members are going to need to understand, know and understand that going forward. The officers, this goes back to the notion that officers are more subject to criminal liability than they have been potentially for use of force. The statements that the officers could and should have made, both the ones involved and the ones who were witnesses but didn't use any force, but they were present on the scene, were very, very slow in coming forward. There, now, there are reasons for that. If the officers who were involved in the deadly force are potentially facing criminal liability, they can. And what they normally do, I learned from talking to the head of the Association of Prosecuting Attorneys about this, is they lawyer up. And, and whether they have to expend their personal funds or whether that's union funds, they're going to lawyer up. And a criminal lawyer who's talking to somebody with potential criminal liability is going to tell them, "Don't make a statement." That's at odds with your duty as a police officer. And I know that was extremely frustrating to the department and had to be frustrating to the officers involved too. They did their job. They did their best. I absolutely agree with Garrett that they, they acted in exemplary fashion here, at risk of their own lives and well-being. And a couple of them suffered badly. But because of the unique situation, they were loath to give statements. Some of even the witness officers, I, at first, didn't give statements. I don't know if everybody eventually did. And the, the investigation went forward without statements from some of the key players. That's really problematic, and I think an unintended consequence of this reform in the law, because the underlying criminal prosecution needs those statements. The officers on the scene have to write their reports and say what happened. So you know what, so the department knows what to do with the person who was the focus of all this in the first place. That, that process is still going on with charging deadlines on the part of the prosecution and arraignment deadlines and speedy trail deadlines and all that stuff is rolling on ahead. And if you're missing statements, that can be really problematic. Having the officers out of commission for so long was really a problem that's systemic. Having the officers out of commission for so long was really a problem that's systemic, too. So the lead officer was injured, and of course, he needed to recuperate. But the charging decision, and I'm not part of the prosecutor's office that made that charging decision, but if what you need to be able to prove is that the officer operated in good faith, or you'd have to prove beyond a reasonable doubt that they didn't, to my way of looking at it, was pretty darn simple here. And why that took almost a year, with the officer having that decision dangling over their heads, is unacceptable. And so I think a great improvement in the law would be presumptive deadlines for the prosecutor to make that decision, and that presumptive deadline could be extended for good cause shown. But, you know, right now, it's just floating out there. They make the decision when they make the decision. It affects the community, it affects the officer, it affects everybody else in the department, and I think a deadline would be very helpful. This was a straightforward case. The need for law enforcement response was clear and unequivocal. There had been attacks on the neighbors, fire setting, the officer was attacked, they went and got a warrant. The de-escalation specialist was deployed and rejected by the suspect. They did the things that we want them to do, that the law wants them to do. Because the apartment manager made a videotape from a good vantage point across the drive from the suspect's front door, we could see and hear the police make repeated attempts loudly over a considerable period of time to knock and announce, and eventually, they clearly warned again and again that they were gonna breach the door by force. The Washington State Patrol equipment that was loaned to, to the team allowed a 3D view of the interior of the apartment, and it painted a sad and scary picture of a really disturbed individual who was very isolated and very frightened and very paranoid. The windows were covered, there was junk covering all the space, there were logs of wood jamming the door of the bedroom where he was holed up shut. I learned the term of a fatal funnel, and I know that Anna mentioned that that was something that was a suggestion in terms of entering enclosed spaces, but there was basically this tiny space through which the officers had to go to get in, to get in at the suspect, which set them up, because what he could do, and what he did, was attack them physically, and they had no space to maneuver, and it was dark in there. So it was a very frightening scene. And having the opportunity to observe that as a community member was very helpful, because sometimes these issues get real abstract. And in fact, they're not. They're incredibly human. Well-trained officer did a good job, even after he was injured and he fell forward. He used his shield as something to block the suspect. I think he showed an incredible amount of presence of mind in the moment. But it was actually very good to, to be able to see the details of that. When the scene was cleared, there was immediate medical aid provided to both the officer and the suspect, and the medical professionals treating both indicated that the intervention was probably lifesaving. So this is a straightforward case, and that makes it a really good one to determine whether the protocol is delivering on the legislative intent, because not all the cases are gonna be straightforward. So this is a really good one to examine and see if we can learn any messages from it. One of them that I want to reiterate is the lack of clarity with how this whole process affects, intersects with the prosecution of a crime against the suspect going on. How does the requirement of obtaining statements and the Fifth and Sixth Amendment protections against giving a statement dovetail? How's that work? Because right now, that, that piece isn't working. That's working at cross purposes with all the intentions. And also, there's, I think, just because of lack of familiarity, and we haven't done this that often, there was a relative lack of transparency with the public. I, I think the press releases didn't say much. I think some of the core issues that they could say without doing any harm should be identified, and that would be something that a statewide collation of other agencies' experiences might help. But if the point of the exercise in large part is to be transparent and communicate with the community about, hey, what happened here? Why did the officers have to use their weapons? Why were people almost killed? That's something that, that information that can be released should be released sooner, if possible. It makes sense to collate this information. I'm not sure that it's happening. And it's hard to make sure that normal legislation achieves the goals that it had up on the hill and the horse trading that goes on there to make law of law. It, it's hard in any case. And the legislation that we're talking about here is calling for a societal sea change in how we look at good guys and bad guys, cops and robbers, stuff like that, and our general attitude historically as Americans towards the use of force, especially firearms. So this is big, and this is actually a very exciting opportunity. I think Washington State has taken great steps, but I really want to thank the council for hosting this listening session that hopefully is available to the public, too. I hope they're paying attention, because it can't all work immediately right away. This is a big lift. This is a big change. I think it's really, really important to engage with the police department in terms of, from their perspective, what are the pros and cons of this. I'm gonna reiterate that I had very clearly the picture that OPD was trying its level best to do the right things and all the steps that they took here, and that the CII team, the investigation team, did an extremely good job of evaluating the evidence and eventually reporting in great detail what happened. The good news is they operated in good faith, and I think that local government and state government can really be leaders, as I think Olympia often is, in terms of modeling how to make this good idea for legislation more effective and bring about the change we want it to.
Thank you. I've already got some questions. I'm gonna go with Councilmember Partially first.
I jumped at that because you kind of hit at the second question that I hinted at that I really wanted to ask, which is, what is the process to accumulate criticism, comments, improvements in more than one incident, which unfortunately, we do have in our jurisdiction? But you're also suggesting potentially statewide, which I'm intrigued with, because I think this has the bones, but I want to make sure that we actually get it fleshed out in a manner that it actually serves what we think it will.
Absolutely, absolutely. We, you know, there's gonna be a degree of balkanizing in any multi-jurisdictional area. And so we have so many levels of law enforcement. We've got police, we've got sheriffs, different agencies run differently in different municipalities. There's a state patrol, and use of force could take place with anybody. This is a statewide law. There isn't any one, anybody looking at it. I've talked to a couple reporters since I first got accepted to the team, but they've been looking for that, you know, collation of material, too. That would really help. This is a big societal issue. So seeing how these iterations are playing out in the different jurisdictions would be really useful in terms of plugging holes that are leaking and also recognizing best practices and putting them into SOPs.
Thank you. That kind of goes to, I guess, a question to the powers that be in the police department. We have two other community members observing the other. Is there plans to pull together all four and say, these are our observations, these are areas we think we can improve, like communication? I'll be honest, I've already been thinking about that for both of them. I feel like there's, there's a vacuum, and in the presence of a vacuum, people make up things.
That is true.
And, you know, if we can get a little information, just what is the process and how are we gonna go forward so that we can continue to be that model that Rayco was talking about?
Yes, so we do have the after-actionary, you know, reports where all the community reps get together as a group, myself, and start aligning, and we talk about all of these issues and how we can deal with them. Now, obviously, with the, we're waiting for the second critical incident to get done with the prosecutor's office down in Clark County. Once that gets complete in our internal review, then we'll do an after-action with that, and then I'll share that. We have training every year with the Tom Water Police, Lacey Police, Yellin Police, everybody that's involved, and we'll share that all with the commanders and get better.
Would it be possible to ask to have, once all that's done, I'm sure it's gonna be months down the line or longer, to bring it either back to council or community livability and then back to council, so we can all learn, would that be possible?
Yeah, it's something we can look at, sure.
But it's the community, the, the critical incident review teams, of course, are regional, and it's those that, they should all collate across the state. It would be possible to just, you know, check the boxes and communicate very, very little through this, if, if you wanted to.
Councilmember Madron.
You're hired.
Double my salary, please.
In all seriousness, though, you know, I, I really appreciate you requesting this briefing and for thinking so critically about how we can do better, how the state can do better. And I know that the leadership in the room here has been taking probably more notes than I have, and I've been taking a lot of notes, and I just, I really appreciate your, your commitment to helping us get this right, 'cause you're, you're absolutely right that we, as a city, I know Olympia Police Department, like the, and the state legislature, the whole point of this is to, to gain trust in law enforcement and to do the best that we can to serve the community. And, you know, one of, one of the questions I've, I've had for each of you, and I'll ask you as well, Rayco, with an additional one on that, 'cause I'm just curious as to what your thoughts are, you know, what, what's the time commitment that you've given to this process? And then the, the question after that is like, is this sustainable? 'Cause I'm just seeing that we have, we have community volunteers here who are bringing extensive expertise, really giving their time to it. We've got another team who's working on a separate incident. Is it sustainable for us to be able to lean on the community in this way, and is there something that we could do differently to make it sustainable? 'Cause I, I just, I'm concerned about what we're asking of people.
A lot of time, because I, I am interested in the topic, committed to the topic, and so just kind of on my own, I've done a lot of interacting with people about it. So it's hard to put a number, a lot of hours. Also, in those weekly check-ins, I didn't really do, I had a couple of them by email, but a lot of times, I would sit down with Deputy Chief Hollis, and since there wasn't that much new, we would just talk philosophically and specifically about the process of this law and how it was shaking out. So that ended up being some time. But the way that I think it can be made sustainable is you want to draw people who are committed, you want to draw people with expertise. The way to make it sustainable is to continue to make it work better. If it's effective, then you're gonna have people continuing to be committed, 'cause they'll see that there is, there are deliverables here. And, you know, it's hard, it's hard for a police department to get evaluated. It's always something that they push again, any police department, because, you know, people haven't walked in their shoes, they don't know what they're, you know, there's a lot of details, there's a lot of assumptions people make if they're not specifically familiar with what the job actually is. So having people from the outside without information making criticisms and assumptions is, is hard to take. I think this process is very salutary, because it requires informed community members and the police departments to get to know each other better and to interact. And the best way to gain trust and familiarity and get a better, more realistic picture of people who have been other is to spend time interacting with them in a meaningful way. And so I think that, that, that's a real positive, that's a real positive effect of, of the, the concept behind the legislation.
Well, thank you so much. The feedback that you've offered, the extra time that you've put into this is an incredible gift to the city. Same goes for you, Garrett and Anna. Just, I, I really appreciate your, your commitment to helping us do better.
Great. Mayor Pro Tim Kilman.
I'm, I'm putting in my, my memory banks, your suggestions for statewide and regional improvements, and I'm also hearing from all three of you that it was the first incident under new rules, the first time to have community representatives, so there's some figuring it out as, as folks go along about what can be disclosed to you, when you should be included. Rayco, I'm wondering, could you speak to, having been through this incident, you spoke to sort of the statewide implementation of I-940 value, how about for the Olympia community, having the three of you have this opportunity, even with the limited, limited information between those first investigation days and the final report coming? Could you just speak for a moment to what you think is the value to the community of the access that the three of you did have?
First, I'd like to say that I'd like to have had more access than I had. It was, it was kind of a black box up until that final report, which was exhaustive. The final report was as exhaustive and detailed as the earlier portions were kind of a closed book. So I think the value to the community will be enhanced if that can possibly be modified. What would make sense to me, and I said I'm still not 100% clear on the confidentiality imposed on the community members and when it ends, but what would make sense to me would be if we were required to maintain confidentiality, but we were also included in briefings as the investigation went on. That would make sense. And then, inasmuch as there are periodic, there's an affirmative requirement in, in the regulations that the community members see all press releases before they're released, well, I think they should be involved in them. They should make proposals as to what we think the community would like to hear, needs to hear, and, and that should be expressed, either by amending the WAC or putting that into an SOP. Because I'm trying, I'm, I'm thinking, I, I know people in the community, activists, who are very dedicated to the reform of our criminal justice system in this specific iteration of use of force, particularly against minority communities. And so the, they're extremely interested in that information, not eight months after something happened, sooner than that. And yes, there are aspects of investigations, absolutely, I know this, that have to be confidential because it's flowing and you don't want witnesses to get polluted, and you don't want information to get manipulated, but there, there, there could be more information that's released, and then there could be a vetting of, is this a solid fact? Is this something that the community can and should know without compromising people's constitutional rights or a potential prosecution?
Thank you. And Ray, I just want to strongly agree with you that when we made the, well, first, when the police department and the city wanted to sort of go first, to go early to create community representatives, we knew that, you know, that the process wasn't all established. But my understanding of what we asked of people who were applying to do this was that they would be willing to sort of be shoulder to shoulder with the independent investigation team through the process. So I, I assumed that there was going to be more than sort of having an early look at the draft of the report, and...
I, I don't know that we got that. We, we got, we got, we got looks at the press releases.
Okay.
Just the press releases, not the report.
So the, the report might have been available to media at the same time as you got it as community representatives?
Yeah, I think that was an open public meeting, wasn't it? Or was it? Was not? It was a closed meeting? It was a closed meeting?
Okay.
So, no, we did, we did get that.
Okay. At, at any rate, I, I think that that's, that's important, growing pains, hopefully, that, that will continue to, to figure out how much and when the access is in exchange for the, the time and the thought that you are all putting into this oversight. So, thank you.
I think we really, really want this legislation to work, to succeed and be effective.
Well, hopefully Olympia can be a leader again in that regard, and this is a great first step by having this recorded and available to the community. It can be shared across the state, and we're gonna take a lot of what you've all shared with us and just sit with it. It's, it's a lot. I want to thank you very, very much for being the pioneers for our city in this regard. I did have one question for Lieutenant Smith, though.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you. So lots of notes here, I'm trying to find my question. Oh, yeah, okay, so it went back, we recently were briefed on the upcoming launch of the state independent investigation board and the training that goes into, you know, their citizen representatives. So when that is established, how do we decide whether we're gonna use our own local citizen review versus the state review?
Yeah, at this point in time, in regards to the OII, I can't...
Yeah, at this point in time, in regards to the OII, I can't really speculate on anything. I did talk to their communications manager, Director Hector Castro, last week, and we talked about community representatives. And of course, I expressed our wish that if there's an incident that occurs in Olympia, I would like, we would like our community representatives that live in Olympia be involved with this. So I passed along what I believed in. But at this point in time, when it comes to OII, we're all about, we want that unit to be successful. And I shared with them that anything that they needed from myself and Sergeant wanting to assist them, we're all on board. We want them to be successful, but I also would like our community reps to be involved if something happens in our city.
Maybe they need to apply for those positions.
I just want to say thank you, everybody, for giving us an opportunity to speak. And as you can see, we have the cream of the crop here with our community representatives. Thank you.
Thank you. And that concludes our regular agenda items for this evening. We'll move on to council reports. All I have is that we will not be meeting for a business meeting next week. So if you show up, we won't be here. And then when we come back, it'll be a study session. So we will not be accepting public comment for another few weeks. As well, I believe, we have our Director of Parks, Arts and Recreation. Is the summer catalog available for the public to start registering for classes? I didn't mean to put you on the spot. Is this, I thought I saw the launch of the summer programs.
Thought it would be better to talk to the mic instead of yelling from the back. Paul Simmons, Parks, Arts and Recreation Director. Summer camp registration opened last Saturday.
That's what I saw.
And there were emails and communication that had been being blasted out. There was quite a bit of buzz. We shattered records and there was over $600,000 of registration.
Wow.
In the one day alone, which is close to half of our revenue for the year as a recreation division. So it was very substantial. The summer catalog with the full cadre of programs is not quite out yet. I don't know the date off the top of my head, but it will be out in the coming weeks.
Okay, excellent.
I think they're bringing the final touches on it.
I really appreciate the extra pushout of the early registration for summer camps because in the past, you know, it was more difficult for people to access that information. By the time they heard about it, it was too late. So anyhow, thank you.
One, two quick notes while I have the mic. One is that we started last year giving pre-registration for folks who use scholarships and access scholarships. They can actually register in advance of the rest of the community. Because what was happening was the time that it would, the camps would fill up before someone could go through the application process. And so it really almost made it impossible and prohibited for folks using scholarships. So that was a change that was made last year, and then we had even more people take advantage of it this year. So that was good. And then another change, we've struggled. Our camps are very, very popular and some of them fill within minutes, almost like buying concert tickets. And we are limited in our growth due to facilities, transportation, and then also having enough staff. As we know, hiring folks has been challenging, not just in our industry, but across the board. And so we continue to do what we can to expand where we can, but we do have some limits. We understand some people are frustrated with that and not everyone can get in. But I would encourage those folks to look at organizations like the YMCA and even our neighboring cities do have some availability. And again, we're doing everything we can to grow and we added a site a couple of years ago. And we're trying to figure out how we can add another one because we know the demand is there. One other item that we did, a change that was this year was, in the past, our registration has been the first Monday in March. And we received some feedback that that was really hard for working families and working parents. And so we did a survey last year afterwards. And based on the feedback that we got from community members, we moved opening registration to Saturday at 8:00 AM so that it was more accessible and easier. So we are, while it's, it's still challenging for people that aren't on top of it right when it opens up for registration, we are trying to do things to make it more, as accessible as we can for folks.
And equitable.
Yes.
Thank you so much for that report out. That's all I have. I'll go to Councilmember Madron.
Yeah, when my kiddo was young enough to need a summer camp, I distinctly remember being in transit on the way to the airport or something, being like, oh God, it's 8:00 AM. I gotta sign up for summer camp or we're not going to get in. So thanks for your work on that. The Sea Level Rise Response Collaborative had our first meeting of the year on the 3rd. And we have our new staff liaison today, who's Dr. Pamela Baraf. She did an excellent job. So on our work plan this year, we have a few items, installing a tide gauge, which Olympia is leading on. And then we have three other tasks that have been divvied up among the jurisdictions. And it's super helpful to like be able to divvy out the work like that. So there's going to be a study on land subsidence, so how much downtown is sinking while sea level is rising. And the port is taking the lead on that. We also have a groundwater study to see how sea level rise is impacting things we can't see below the surface. And Lot is taking the lead on that. And then we are also doing a study on public financing mechanisms, how we pay for all of it. And Olympia is taking the lead on that. And we also had a really in-depth report on the flood that occurred in late December of last year. Thankfully, we had our ex-officio member, Eric Christiansen, with us, who it was, one of his last hurrahs before retirement was being able to help protect Olympia from that flood that was occurring. And so this, this was an 18.4-foot-high tide. I won't get into exactly what that means because the way Eric described it was very complicated as to how that's measured. But he said that it is greater than a 100-year event, and we saw impacts. You know, I think most of us on social media saw impacts down at Percival Landing, but also Columbia Street and near the market. There were some impacts around Moxley Creek and on that side of downtown. And Lot even saw water coming up around Franklin Street. So it was, the photos that were shared were very, very telling as to the importance of all of this work. And one of the things that Eric shared was that like, had there been any wind, it would have been much worse because it would have created waves. So that work will continue. This group meets quarterly, so I'll talk to you all about this again in three months. And the land use committee hasn't met, you know, since we met last. But I did want to let you know that in terms of our work plan, I have been working with Leonard to try to pare things back so we can prevent having three-hour meetings. And just so you all know, you know, I noticed that the southeast annexation was on both the land use and the finance work plan. And it doesn't make sense to have two committees making recommendations, especially when two-thirds of the members are the same people. So, you know, we actually passed that one off to finance because it is more related to the finances associated with annexation. We also are going to send the Capitol Mall Triangle work straight to council because there was no recommendation for land use to make on it. There's a pretty tight timeline, there's been robust community engagement. So that one will come straight to us as a study session. We also, we're going to have a briefing on the Martin Way Corridor Study. And we are opting to also just bring that to council because that wasn't going to come to council directly in any way. And it's a really, it's a really important part of our community that we're, where we're wanting to see a lot of high-density development. It's a lot of transportation issues. There's a lot of issues that impact and touch on all of our work with our various committees. So that, just so you all know, there's some shifting around that we're doing on our work plan, both to ease our workload, but also share the fun. That's my report.
Any questions for Councilmember Madron?
All right, Mayor Pro Tim Gilman.
Thanks. First, I'm looking forward to that summer parks catalog. We were looking last night to see if it's up yet because I only know two steps so far. So I have to get back to the dance classes on Friday night so I can try to broaden my repertoire a little bit because my wife is getting bored dancing with me. So we're working on that. The Thurston Regional Planning Council met on Friday. And just a couple of things that I wanted to report on. One is the Regional Transportation Improvement Plan amendments to that evolving, ongoing document. Olympia had proposed removing the log cabin road extension from the plan. And the Regional Planning Council staff recommends leaving it in, but also acknowledging that we have a traffic study in the works and that we are seeking other ways to maintain that east-west connectivity. So we'll, we'll see. It's going to go back to the Transportation Policy Board.
Tomorrow morning.
Tomorrow morning, bright and early, and then come back to the Regional Planning Council again for a decision. But I think we'll be okay either way, that we know what we're going to do. We're not convinced that the alignment right through log cabin road, as described before we bought the land and made a park, still makes sense. But we remain completely committed to east-west connectivity across that neighborhood. So I think we're in good shape there. The other thing we spent quite a bit of time on was a report about the climate action work. And it was just, it was both really nice to see sort of the litany of good efforts that are happening, like how much more rooftop solar is in our community, how public buildings are doing some efficiency things. And then it was also sobering to see that natural gas consumption is up 20% from our baseline. Solid waste per capita, not as a growing community, but just per capita, is up 26% if you include water and waste. That we're, we're not yet stemming our increase of consumption. So it's just something to consider as we move forward. I know we're all dedicated to this sustainability and climate work. But just to be real, that we're not only not on track to meet the 20, 30 goals, but we're losing ground against several of those measures right now. So just if anybody wanted to go into more of a regulatory kind of world and less of an educate and encourage world, I'd be right there alongside you. And then Inner City Transit met last week, and it was a momentous meeting because Ann Freeman Manzaneras announced her retirement at the end of the month. And we appointed Emily Bergkamp, who's currently the Operations Director, to serve as the interim director. And we're, we made the decision to use the Internal Human Resources Team to conduct a search. So it'll be a national search, but rather than hiring a consulting firm, we're going to work with the interior, the internal staff, who I'm just really convinced, we just hired a couple of senior-level people and it was a great, robust search and amazing people who came to apply. So I'm optimistic about that. So that's my report for this evening.
All right. Any questions for Mayor Pro Tim? Councilmember Madron?
I don't actually have any questions for you, but I realize that land use actually has met. Since, I just forgot that the last meeting we had was a study session, so we didn't do a report.
You've missed your time.
Oh, well then. No backsees, no backsees. And I was like, oh, wait a minute, I have something to say about solid waste, too. So land use did meet on the 23rd of February. And we did get, we've made a recommendation on the solid waste plan update, which will come forward to the full council. This is something that staff have been working on planning since late 2020. It's been in front of the Utilities Advisory Commission five times. It's had very, very robust and thorough reviews. The second time it came before the land use committee. And the big goals around the plan are reducing the quantity and environmental impact of waste, increasing the quantity and quality of recycling and compost to operate safely, efficiently, equitably, and environmentally, and to manage our utility finances responsibly and equitably. There's a big focus on multi-family, multi-use buildings and making improvements there. And also there's, they spoke to dedicating more time to multicultural outreach around waste. And one thing that I really liked that they talked about was not just translation of outreach materials, but also trans-creation of those materials, working with different cultures in our community to figure out like how they receive information, you know, and what's the best way to communicate with them to help reduce waste and help them understand how our solid waste systems work. We also had something ahead of us, in front of us, around reasonable use exemptions. I won't get into the nitty-gritty details of this. This is something that is going to come to the full council, but it has to do with variances for critical areas. We did, the Planning Commission did have a dissenting vote on it. And so we did bring it to the land use committee till that we could look at it very carefully and make a recommendation ourselves. And we did end up going along with what the majority of the Planning Commission had decided around this. And we also talked about in the future that if there is a split vote on the Planning Commission, if there is something that's not unanimous from them, you know, case by case, but to stop the land use committee is probably a good idea. Just so that by the time it comes to us, you know that it's been vetted, not just by the Planning Commission, but also the Land Use and Environment Committee. So that's another thing that will be coming ahead of us soon, reasonable use exemptions with critical areas. Fun stuff. That's my report.
Thank you. Councilmember Partially?
I just have two things. We had the Thurston County Climate Mitigation Steering Committee. We got kind of an update on the retreat items, which is a suggestion of moving more to a staff-based program and having the steering committee meet quarterly with a retreat. In this particular meeting, what we did was we extended the current work plan and did not make new because what we're going to try to do is a transition in May to June to the staff-based. There will probably be about $11,000 for each jurisdiction that will not be spent. But because the way we're doing the budget, when the money is spent, we ask for it. So it's going to stay in Pamela Baraf's treasure chest. It's not a big amount, but it's a little. We got the 2022, 2021 update on the Thurston County greenhouse impact from the last couple of years, our gas inventory. And in general, we're about 3% to 4% down from 2015, but that's up from 2020. And while we decreased in the buildings' energy sector 3%, there's two alarming things. One, natural gas went up 19%, and electricity use went up 8%, which says energy efficiency is down. However, we had a 40% increase in renewable energy. And I'm just going to jump because you guys are talking about solid waste. I'm going to add to that conversation and say that the biggest sector that increased in greenhouse gases was solid waste by 26%. It was pretty astounding. Then we went on to getting the report that we've been long waiting, which is carbon sequestration white paper came out. And this is the bottom line. I'm going to give you a couple, a few things that we did learn out of it. It is not feasible with actions currently in the Thurston County Climate Mitigation Plan. And it is to, using it as one of our ways to get our wedge analysis to meet our goals is not feasible. Okay? So it is too ambitious. They did tell us, though, this is something that I didn't recognize, that half of Thurston County is forested. But 93% of that is out in the county, out of urban boundaries. 60% of that is in managed timber, 37% is in private hands, and 3% is in parkland. So the DNR has a great deal to do with this. But what the urban areas can do is we can look and work with DNR to prevent logging inside our boundaries without notice, avoid conversion of lands if possible, improve our technology, regulatory, financial incentives, and start looking for data and following the science to see where we can bring it back into the plan. That was climate change in a nutshell. And then I also had Joint Animal Service Commission last night. And it was excellent because we kind of went through our goals. And one thing I really wanted to point out is we have achieved goal three, which is to interact with our community better. We have a language translator now, not only on the website, but available for people wanting to do adoptions. And they're working on getting language translation capability for animal service officers, and that's moving full speed ahead. The other thing I wanted to point out is our building. Our building is in badges. Jay is going to be talking to you about that on your one-on-ones. Suffice it to say, the $115,000 that we're putting forward to get the plumbing fixed is a Band-Aid. We still have to flush it. We have 1970 cast iron pipes that get hung up with debris. And since this is a shelter and essentially an animal hospital, it is and essentially an animal hospital, it is very likely we are either going to have to move or build, which is expensive. But the big thing for the year on Sarah Hawkes' table is we're not only doing a building land site, size, cost, and capacity for what we do, but we're getting an independent person who, a consultant who actually does this to know about shelters, whether the square footage provided by the potential expansion of a building on that side is going to be adequate. So there's two simultaneous things going, a consultant to see building feasibility, do we have to tear it down and build again? And if we tear it down and build again, will that provide enough square footage to do adequately to do the shelter? And then lastly, I'm just going to give this data because I didn't know it, and it's kind of scary. We're in the process of trying to hire a veterinarian to take over the medical care and start our spay-neuter program. But what was found from the American Veterinary Medical Association, by 2030, there'll be 15,000 jobs shy for veterinarians. In other words, we'll be short 15,000. We only have 90,000 in the country to speak of. For every vet applying, there's 18 jobs. And the statistics used to be 65% of households had pets, now it's 75%. This goes to what we're looking at for the shelter and everything else, so it's a big picture. Because it turns out, in my opinion, as a veterinarian, that the shelters and shelter medicine will probably be providing medical care for pets from the lower and honestly middle-class pets in the future, so this is going to be impacting our building in a big way. And hopefully we'll hire someone, but I'm told not to hold your breath. And the happy tales, I got to end with something happy. A dog was adopted against a husband's wishes, and the mom wrote one year later saying, "The dog is never separated from my husband, he even goes to the grocery store with him."
They wiggle their ways into your hearts, right? Thank you for that report. Any questions for Councilmember Partially? Mayor Protem Gilman?
Thanks, Lisa. Just a couple of things about the Thurston Climate Action Plan. First, the mayor whispered in my ear as you were talking about the solid waste number, and this, this came up in our briefing on Friday at the Regional Planning Council, that in our analysis at this point, we're not tracking sort of the movement of goods, both the embedded carbon and shipping stuff and the carbon in stuff. But the question is, is that solid waste a proxy for measuring how much instant delivery, heavily packaged goods arrive at our doorstep, concierge, driven, you know, and handed to us, right? And I, I just, it'd be important to me if we were to consider some of that cost of the things that we consume in our, the climate cost of some of the things that we consume in our community in the analysis, even though I know it's more complicated than just looking at utilities. Anyhow, so that's one. And then the other, just the quick question is, I am sorry that I didn't ask on Friday whether the Regional Planning Council still has a contract to staff the Thurston Climate Action Plan, or if that is ending at the point that we make this transition to a staff.
Good, good. What's going to happen is, right now, currently, we will be having a role for the TRPC, Thurston Regional Planning. What is, the delay is the staff work group is working on, what does that look like? Where are they going to have a role? But they will have a role, they will be facilitating the retreat, the Steering Committee, and the Community Action Work Group, which is made up of subject matter experts. But exactly what their role will be, we're not 100% sure, but it will be considerably pared down and therefore less money. And you're right about solid waste. I remember those conversations, and I remember Nathaniel Jones and I both, and Rich Huwersy, saying, you know, we're missing a big sector, which is this, the cost of bringing goods in, and how do you measure that? But you're right, you know, especially in pandemic, when we're bringing in plastic for everything, and boxes and everything else.
Thank you. I'm going to go to Councilmember Quinn.
So the Community Livability and Public Safety Committee has met many times. Our last regular meeting was on February 22nd, where we heard a property crime update from the Olympia Police Department. Pretty exciting stuff is, not the crimes, of course, but to be able to see the amount of data that we did see. And, and in, in our fashion, we asked for even more specificity. So I look forward to even more improved, just information from what's happening in the community. And then also, we had a lot of questions about terminology, why were certain things included, why weren't they? And so it was, it was really enlightening, I thought. And then we also received a Youth Council Scope Schedule and Budget briefing from Susan Grisham. And the committee was really, really impressed by how intentional, how thoughtful, and how many things that we were really looking at, or the, the work group around the Youth Council standing up was looking at. So really exciting stuff. And then there were two special meetings, once on March 1st and then on March 2nd, to staff, staff, to have interviews and seat the different advisory boards, commissions, and committees for the city. On the, on March 1st, we interviewed 12 different community members, and then we followed that up the next night and interviewed 14 different community members. And it was all coordinated so well by our very own Dawn and Kelly from the city. So I, I couldn't imagine being behind the scenes and, and making sure that everything was happening so smoothly, especially as, you know, with interviews, they tend to run under and they tend to run over a little bit. So a lot of great teamwork there. And I, Councilmember, or Councilmember Mayor Selby and I, I think, make quite a pair, making decisions and, and making folks feel, feel comfortable. As Mayor Selby was saying, as we were, it was long nights, but it was, it's truly a joy, even though you're excited for it to be over at the same time, right? But we get to hear from just extraordinary community members, people from all walks of life. I think that this being my third year, we're seeing even more just different types of people, not just demographically, but the different backgrounds that they're bringing, why they're interested in serving in this way to the city. And I think the mayor says it well, she says, "It's just an embarrassment of riches," and I agree. So lots of great appointments hopefully made once it's confirmed at our March 28th council meeting. And then on March 3rd, in my role as Chair of the Community Livability and Public Safety Committee, you'll remember that at our annual retreat, the council has decided to designate me as Police Auditor Liaison, lucky me. And so I got to meet with her, our Police Auditor, and then as well as Assistant City Manager Sullivan. And it was our first meeting of its kind, we'll be meeting quarterly. And it's just a good time to check in and connect and be able to have another avenue of providing council feedback and then also getting information and sharing it with my councilmates as well. So some of what we talked about, the Police Auditor shared that she had met with the Social Justice and Equity Commission. It was a really productive meeting. They were able to just ask really candid questions back and forth and learn. They had initially said that they would not be, they would take a pass on reviewing the 2022 Police Auditor Report that is still being worked on. And then, and they had said that because of some of the feelings of the commission members and some of the feelings that it brought up, and some of the language that was used. And they thought that it would be a good idea for them to learn more before reviewing the report. They had some time to think about it, and they have decided that they will indeed review the report to be a good learning opportunity for them as well. So that brought us sort of naturally to talking about, the Police Auditor and I, to talking about the, what I could imagine being a pretty difficult balance between wanting to use, humanize our language, and, and at the same time, you know, be, be responsible and call things by their legal terms, right? And of course, not only does the Police Auditor in her role want to make sure that she, she's doing her duty and, and providing transparency and, and trying to be as thoughtful as she can, but also there's, you know, she's not a creative writer, of course, and she's not our communications person, so that difficult balance, and I thought that that was a really, that was a really good conversation to have. Another part about language is that I had given the feedback to have more definitions included in the report, not only the annual report, but then also the monthly updates that we receive, understanding that the updates are just supposed to be shorter spurts each month. And then also just having more descriptions. So for me, when I see something along the lines of X amount of cases were reviewed, no bias was found, all policies were followed, I think, okay, great. But what does that mean, right? So what is, what is, what does it mean when no bias is found? And I think that's the default. I think it's the, but both of those things are good, and I, and I don't want them to, it's, it's great if that, that is so. And also I think that there is an opportunity here to talk more about, well, what was your process so, of determining whether or not there was bias? What was your process of policies? And then also, something that I've probably said every time I've seen the auditor, and something she's interested in as well, is so following policies is one thing, and then also opportunities for policies to be updated as she's doing, as she's doing reviews, so something to think about. And then, oh, and then another thing that came out of this is going back to her interacting with the Social Justice and Equity Commission, is she was explaining that what her scope, her contract is as Police Auditor, and that it is a narrow scope into, right now she's reviewing cases where there's a use of force, not auditing the entire police department overall. And so that is, that is some learning for, and she doesn't feel that folks really recognize what exactly her scope is. She did say that she would, you know, she would like the opportunity to go above and beyond her scope, that is not what she is contracted to do with us. So perhaps more conversation on that later. I thought it was a really productive meeting. Of course, if you have more thoughts, we can talk about it, and I will be connecting with all of you before our next meeting. And that's everything for me, thanks.
Thank you. Any questions? Councilmember Partially?
I'm assuming, and Jay may need to help me with this, that going above and beyond with extending our contract, which would cost more and-
Yeah, if, if we wanted to have the auditor look at other things other than her current scope, then there would be a, a cost associated with that. But I think, you know, as we've launched the auditor, I think we're learning a little bit every year, a bit more about what she's learning, what she's finding, and I think we can have a conversation about what else might we want the auditor to look at. I think this will also dovetail into the conversations about community review and what that looks like and how they might work with an auditor and how that might expand the scope as well. So I think there's a lot more conversation around all this.
I think that's excellent. And maybe, I was thinking about the state auditors, when they come in, they don't always do some, the whole city, they pick and point, and maybe some of our policies, and maybe Community Livability Committee could talk about, what does that look like? As giving her some, allowing her to do suggestions as well as the Social Justice and Equity Commission.
Yeah. Councilmember Madron?
Sorry. I decorated Dante's mic and I couldn't see, the light was turned on.
I'm sure he'll love that when he's back.
I would also be curious, you know, as we talk about the scope of the Police Auditor, especially having this presentation this evening on, you know, the lethal use of force, you know, where there might, you know, when we brought the Police Auditor on, that was, that legislation was not in place, you know, we hadn't talked about, you know, we weren't yet, you know, talking about civilian review and all that. So where there might be overlap with the scope of work and other things going on, and how we can make sure to leverage the Police Auditor to like complement these new things that have come about since we've brought her on.
All right. City Manager Jay Burney, your report.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I have one item. This Friday, we have two employees that are going to be graduating from the Northwest Women's Leadership Academy. The Northwest Women's Leadership Academy is sponsored by the Washington City Managers Association. It was organically grown by female leaders within WCMA who recognize that we need to do a better job as an organization to advance women working in local government leadership roles. And so they kicked off about four years ago with their first cohort. I believe we've had employees in every single cohort since it's been started. And this Friday, Suki Bell from CPND and Laura Keyhan from Parks will be formally graduating from this current cohort of the Northwest Women's Leadership Academy. So I just want to congratulate them for their, not only their investment in themselves, their investment in this organization for representing the City of Olympia. And this is something I'm really proud that we continue to have employees participate in. So congratulations, Suki and Laura.
Absolutely. Thank you so much. And with there being no further business before the Olympia City Council, we're adjourned.